Teal sixteen day, have eight regular session. House of delegate, teal eleven olbyar olau, annamogdongul mora order. Magul nitar beklad bodat tele ekkle ebola adh magrengul uer, auera da omurra order o business, teal atutau. Clerk, amur olkod.
Speaker Anastasio.
Oi.
Delegate Arura.
Oi.
Delegate Gibbons Junior.
Oi.
Delegate Culibert. Floridir Ganai. Delegate Komsom.
Oi.
Delegate Marino.
Ngatyang.
Vice Speaker Niraywet. Delegate Niratkak Ganai. Delegate Ongidoble.
Oi.
Delegate Otobod. Delegate Traulug. Delegate Sinzak. Delegate Solaplay.
Oi.
Delegate Talley.
Oi.
Delegate Umetaro.
Oi.
Mister Speaker, mania korum.
Mania korum e, brangasuleme eh, delegate Arura. Mania te del, delegate sel, teal olbunge, teal atutau. Mania delegate Madam Kanair, ab stay trytai. El, mla merre araxusem, onltingera, asitou ense ngira. Raguan. Mung exust kor da, teal session. Delegate teal olunga, teal ngara uiripin. Teal go, mania referar, rabil non, teal ngasi. Ma delegate ra ngayura, mania personala, teipingimoruan, mo dearzu ngatyang. Teo vema, exust, akbrangasulebe, teal adh lmer tiang. Di teve, gi da dhotin ngatyang. E floridir gomesa, adhuldruidingen, aregordel, cloal, bilan araduldruiding. Ma direkt ngara fullsruiding. Gudogamal productive e, gomesin last week, anex week, e mo last eh, regular session. E go me da, vadis giving, family day, magrismas mung. Akbrangasulebe da, bo ma, ma olali, floridele, bo mukraru re da atutau.
Manzaula speaker, e un tutal le gorau ma. Vice Speaker, majotu cloalau gi gi, delegate Arura. Eh, ar beklad roguy. Gud, momesel sel galender gi, mukmor sel item four. Ma mania tablo, journalis underer sel four A, sel item four A, ma megamoxion magud. Adapt ra, second day journal, ra eight special session.
Sekita moxion, mlar sel, journal, mna sekedet, te kel go ngai, mda adapt niil du oi. Onto, team naso adaptet, floridir.
Teal unmud, adapt ra dur day journal, ra eight special session, speaker.
Sekita taran moxion, teleke mlar tiang, dur day journal, ra eight special session, mna sekedet. Te kel go ngai du oi. Onto, floridir, team la mngai, adaptet el tablo.
Salus speaker, gud, mal mol, mal mor sel item four B. Mbo megamoxion, mda di fer action gi, gi re sel seven day journal, ra seventh regular session.
Sekita moxion, di fer action gi, te kel, sel, seven day journal, ra seven regular session. Mna sekedet, te kel go ngai, mlsodi fer du oi. Onto, team naso di fer, floridir.
Gud mal mol, msp, mor sel item eight, mania qul del, sel senate communication, mania qul del communication, senator mergi, del underer sel item. Majotel communication, senator mergi, del one eighty number ngi, ah, di gi re sel, senate resolution eleven thousand ninety one. Teadi confirmation, e gi re la, Mister Aloisius Alontelay. Moadala board of land surveyor examiners. Akal sel, three years. Yeah, one eighty one communication, senator mergi, da di re di gi re la, senate resolution eleven thousand ninety two. Di re confirmation, appointment, Mister and Doctor Robert Amais. Moadala board of trustees of Plau Community College, da di re la, four years, akal sel. Olubon communication, senator mergi, one eighty two, ah, gi re la transmital, senate resolution eleven thousand ninety three. Teasel dimo declare, vacancy, aging lela senate. Lunti re sel untimly passing, honorable senator Regis, agi taya. E gi damal mol, ma re, spl, mor sel item twelve A. Mania ra fullsreading, mbo megamoxion, mda pasra, housepin number eleven thousand eighty two thousand eight.
Sekita moxion, ols ede pasel, bi ra fullsreading. Clerk, amiu etaitol.
Housepin number eleven thousand eighty two thousand eight. Teal uldasol mol la amomlot, ra forty PNC, subsection fourteen zero one. Mo provide exception, more application, ra hotel room, ma vessel cabin occupancy tax. Muregal outline states. Teabler introduce ngi, delegate Solaplay, maruptoy sel delegates.
Sekita etaitol, namu yu, edung ma olam sa, teve la delegate abliyo, gula, atontumiya, teal proposed bi ra fullsreading.
Manzaula speaker, e, mal mil tutal le gorau ma, ar beklad roguy. Speaker, teal bi, omamesan ngi, ah, gula biot, ngin gula, tergi bil itituogal. Di speaker, adu teal uldosol mol la, mna, abadomdasol ngi, ah, kam dangaya, omotmakela, igal wa, ah, stay home, ah, shovai. Ma loa hotel, ma motel, mbringla omotmakela, ma agan ngi, ah, abto gurel ilorul. Osu utam, speaker, kam dangaya, igal, igal blul, outline state, ngaliega gi dil, loa hotel, motel, ma homestay. Teagi dil motraktara, ngara mulme, alang, mal mbringla, touristel mol, ah, igal gi dil blul. Osu utam, speaker, ah, igal outline state, roi, business, economic center. Mbringla, te telela, atagola, ah, igal blul, outline state alorul, atagola shovatiil, roi. Ma, madu ngi, te, team ngamal di mo exempt, ah, alum tax omni. Mole ngi gi dil shovai, gukma, igal gi dil outline state. Ah, madu, itituogal olorul, blul belau, itituogal olatela audion, ma omotmakela, igal, troi, guk agan outline state, omolal, e, omotmakla. Teagi gula olasol, kiloba de, ol ngi, ma, gud ngaseu, eh, ad help, ma mal agan, outline state. Du segi, moses speaker, egunamsulam.
Sekita, kamsulara, awil, losengem, teal bi, gabe, delegate abliyo, aulala, open for discussion. Don forgate, gud ngara fullsreading. Asugum ndia, eh, te kel go ngai, pasel teal fullsreading ildu oi. Onto, teal bi, mna pasel fullsreading, asaid mora kamitira, waste in means. Floridir.
Oi speaker, se, teal ngara second reading, gud, e, mal termoraduldruiding, sel item twelve C. Ma, megamoxion, mda pasra dhotin reading, housepin number eleven thousand fifty eight thousand six S H T one.
Sekita moxion, mlar teal bi, aduldru final reading. Clerk, amiu etaitol.
Housepin number eleven thousand fifty eight thousand six S H T one. Teal uldasol mol la amomlot, ra title two, Ra National Code. Mo provide re preservation, ra record, ra president, ma vice president, majutin otlomso del. Teable introduce ngi, delegate Culibert, maruptoy sel delegates.
Sekita, ah, etaitol, namu yu, team alinga mal, ah, discussion ngi. Teke se ede open for discussion. And sugum ndia, sugum mania, kamitira, budusia imam. And sugum ndia, eh, clerk, amur olkod.
Delegate Arura.
Oi.
Delegate Gibbons Junior.
Oi.
Delegate Culibert. Floridir Ganai.
Oi.
Delegate Komsom. Delegate Marino. Vice Speaker Niraywet. Delegate Niratkak Ganai. Delegate Ongidoble.
Oi.
Delegate Otobod. Delegate Traulug. Delegate Sinzak. Delegate Solaplay. Delegate Talley. Delegate Umetaro.
Oi.
Speaker Anastasio.
Oi.
Mister Speaker, asinkyo, mal, housepin number eleven thousand fifty eight thousand six S H T one, adhotin liyes, ede agano.
Sekita, keka, asinkyo, dhotin, gi da, amebot liyes, ede agano, teal bi, mna mngai, unanimously, delegates present. Floridir.
Speaker, akber mo, megamoxion, gud pasra dhotin reading, housepin number eleven thousand sixty seven thousand seven S H T one.
Sekita moxion, mna sekedet, mlar sel bi, aduldru final reading. Clerk, amiu etaitol, agira discussion.
Housepin number eleven thousand sixty seven thousand seven S H T one. Teal uldasol mol la amomlot, ra chapter seventeen, ra title eleven, Ra National Code. Mol gopaya, osisapalil, omrusel, oturulil, olap, mauspalila, electronic cigarettes, ra alsel, blul belau. Majutin otlomso del. Teable introduce ngi, delegate Komsom, maruptoy sel delegates.
Sekita etaitol, namu yu, edivol, gataklo, se gudumsaw, atagola. Di ga teal delegate, to ngai, gud, di malokum, oyu, ngua, olam sa, delegate Komsom, di will, sumodi. Asugum ndia, ah, ngodi, bulongi, edu gor, asinkyo.
Speaker, mania, Flor amendment, ra taqal, delegate Komsom.
Oh, okay.
Malige, entertain ngi, mal sugum, abangganga, discussion, bo, teal flas. So, mogal, adapt ra, segi, amendment offered by.
Sekita, moxion, mlar teal amendment, ra Komsom, mna sekedet. Miskau lau, delegat ra ngayangal bo, so di teal amendment, ra.
Mansula speaker, e, wututau, morau ma, ar beklad, speaker, teal amendment, teal uldasol mol la, amaldi mo, omakoral. Ra minister, mung mo, onor alil, obisirngi, mo posta sign, ra airport, ra seal arrival area. E loa isra okia, gari gi, lmera blul belau, wa se, gari da, mogul, wa isri teal, ulai, isigaret, ra blul belau. Eh, direkt, morulim, tekel, wa isra okia, wa se, tekel, sabmitai, gamgul, ra blul belau. Ndi sugum, tomong, esabmitai, gari gi dil kalo, ende abol, mutautra la. E gi khalo, abol, kalektar minister, motrakletal, usper ngi, et mo destroy. Mo, mo kalekt, te motomal, gari gi dil khalo, naso isri blul belau, er okia, gari da, ade abol, mututakra la. De segi, di speaker, mansulam.
Sekita, mal clear, gabe, delegat ra to vel, bo. Sulara, teal, speaker, e, wul, tutal le gorau ma. Vice ma Flor, ma beklad. Speaker, akmal, mo yu, go ngai, oldubert, teal Flor amendment, ra taqal, delegat ra ngayangala. Akte ngi, akmadu, wa se, Iintenter tiang, malasmal. Provide information, mo, aradh, tir, merbelau, lo laba, igal gi dil, makitil. Lo, blad, label, e gi, makitil, dohul, isigaret. Ni, gi da, madu, say, ah, ah, gari cartridge, ah, igal isigaret, taibisil takai. Omse dil, adh ngar, omraela, while on, in transit, merbelau. Et, to, to madu, wa se, tirgala, merbelal, me maketert. Metela, mo, supply, omara supply, sir tir, on, on the way. Mung, in, in a way, sebe del, di ma madale, wa isir tir, through media, alaban, through internet. Len, madu, say, karunmen, ta ngaria, website. Mung, by the board website, mung, gud, provide information in advance. Madu, albelger, ra airport, te lo mesra sign, eboldore, award of hundred dollars, cartridge, ra gari gi dil, isigaret. Di, by, di ma, moitra, blagumi. Mung, gud, gula, ma, strira, advance notice, through website. Madu, gud, di, ngara airport, maybe we need to expand, segi, dil. Information, gud, include, a website, ra government website, te sebe, mo, tarab. Avenue, information, bo, to, mora, aradh, merbelau. Se gula, di, om, om ngi, speaker, mansula, teal. Ya, segi, delegat ra, to beng, direkt, responsibility, tir, adh ra, airline, loa isra, aradh, merbelau, lo sing. Alla, provide, segi, mo yu, la, kamitira gabe, gabo, delegat ra, angremlu.
Oi, wututas, speaker, mergau, ma beklad, sulara, teal. Plingse, floridir, wa se, di, ta, discuss, teal ogire, speaker, m, til meri, da. Ega, mung, it's not so much, wa se, statement, ra ngara gi re la, gari posta sign, ma ra airport. Ndi, salam, mung, ngili, speaker, ah, wa se. Akmo yu, teal uldasol mol la, egora mal, mo, omotigil, wa se, ngora, diakal, se, egal, separate, ra. Akentil, ngi, ma, dohul, akswal, dohul. E ak tiral, madu, ngis, speaker, wa se, teal, diang, altax, loa ya, dohul. Ndi, au excise tax. Ndi, three percent, ah, asel, asuma, alomusa, melile, lmer, ah, igal, eh, gari dil, product, lmer, oltra. Mati, gula, di kilos, spl, wa se. Mania gula, different, ra, sum, asmer, omolam, ai gang, ma obom, omolam, agol. Ngora, mogak, patigal, wa se, ngara, ngaram, gud, gula, nguti, ah, le, clear, agol, e, bluri. Mania, au, kau, du suedel, wa se, uriuli. Gud, mal, kuwi, ke, so, matsa, ah, helder gi, mung, gud, anexeng, mogakal, sebe del, malam, agol. Segi, speaker, len, asum, gud, mal, amrura, ngaa, ngaa, urura, dohul, asum, salam, urura, dohul, akmu, ollo, melile, asum, akmadu, ma se, blagut. Ni, sugum, ndia, speaker, eh, akmo go ngai, lolubert tiang, ding, segi, gula, gula, abtrul, wa se. Ngaram, gud, si, sa, edel, su, set tiang, ah, di regal, lmer kitra, helder gi, e, meri, dohul, di regal, makitra, helder gi. Segi, speaker, mansula, teal.
Sulare, delegate, amlu yu, chairman, ko, se, mo, di, mogat, teal ngi.
Oi speaker, se, mal, mal, misal, valid, il concern. Mal di waso, del, teal dohul, speaker, mani, re la, ah, igal, maral dohul. Ma, rom, mon, tarwar, bo, maspam. Igamal, gaba, denget, wa se, makitra, batinget. Eh, ya, roma, to, to, lia, tenmelen, ra blur belar, la, for example. Ndi, it's unfortunate, gud, mnamora point of time, and, diang. Diang, diang, sebe del, practicing ngi, eh, diakal, sebe del, lotutik, dohul, wa se, prohibit, ra blur belau. Wa, blur, amregel, se, ra, la, nanntindoris, sel prohibit, ah, rom. Mal, ra omrelle, mospel, maroku, speaker, gud, milsa, sel noril crisis, ra bluan regel. Ra, se, ngarakmed, nanntindoris, la, mania, decision, ra regel, akumdaso, inglo crisis. Ndi, gud, promote, de support, wa se, tiang, dohul, ma, roma, gi re, ngara, blur belau. Ndi, segi, gud, gud, ngara, mata, basultai, mna mo, kunitun, sa, teal speaker, ding, na madakal, sebe edel, ilkobak. Na mogi, del tir, reality, la, se, ngaria, dohul, ma, ah, rom, ra blur belau. Ndi, sel uldasol, gi da, ulbagi, mo introduce, tiang. Ah, wa se, besel, dohul. E, medhi, gud, blakta, tiang, la, less harmful, ra uil, tabako. So, mal valid, se, dohul, la, se, ngaram, ndi, kamrelia, mogun, sel, bike, mal, bakit. Eh, 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 gure, erbur, teki, teal, teal, san bakit, la, dohul. Ndi, segi, speaker, uldasol, baka, mitil, wa se. While, weekend, unlike the cigarette, ma alcohol, let's do it. Restaubre, mla abol, in addition to alcohol, ah, I mean, for addition to, ah, uil cigarettes. Direk, speaker, do mes, agil, ndirga biot, eh, ndirga sebe el. Ya, rospel, ah, ndirga sebe edel, ilhandel ngi, when it comes to economic, material users. Kamur, alal, sel, speaker, ulgum, gud, mo, prohibit, atagola. Ngwara, akayo, suposis, braal, sel. Our businessmen, ma, our users, ma. Mung, awul, mgi, del alta, mga ra point of time, etugate, ndi, gud, prohibit. Mung, even, sugum, dingin, ulgum, mongina, education, ngi, ma prevention. Ya, adam, eklo, ma, teleo, dohul, eh, diakal, bo, dohul. Eh, let, gud, gud, na, trainer, tir, etugate, tir, wa se, gama, kitra, batinget. Ndi, gula, i, gamam, elal, ngar ngi, eh, diakal, so, amltog. Mung, segi, uldasol, dohul, was, speaker, wa se, besel, dohul, besel, uldasol, mla mesowis, brabulwa, medigim, di. Lu eral, bo, point of time, ra, tabako, la, alal, sel. Sel, mla mesengi, speaker, eh, ah, gaa, sa, sing, reading, gud, ilup, to, to, gira, lakantil, ka, khalal, diktimodul, awan. Ngintroduce, ngi, awan, ra, gien, umsu, wa se, sebe, introduce, ngi, del, mo, ra uil, tabako. Sebe, lo, yi, ngi, del, mo, malam, ah, maral, dohul. Mung, elal, dirgale, economic impact, ngi, ma political impact, ngi. Eh, the, the store, ngi. Malakapun, edel, mora, problem, ra tabako, ngar ngi, de belau, la, alal, sel. Sulang, speaker.
Sulang, olara, dirgopen. Gabo, delegat ra, son sorol, el ublio.
Tutau, speaker, ma, regal delegate. Manzaula, delegate, Komsom, ra, manle wul, lomso del, gire, sel concern. Eh, e gi da, didi, oldubert, teal, uldasol mol la. Teal amendment, ra chairman, ah, mal wul. Gud, malasmal, pa, Warner, ah, okia, gari gi, lmeri. Ndi, gud, lo la, ah, igal, mesowis. Di, ak tiral, mo, malasmal, lo, sigaret, ah, sel tiang, ma, telal, la, bill. Gud, te kel, guk, akkora, bu, concern, te kel, guk, already, tama, importai, ah, khalal, oltra, eh, patoga, ah, sel, seti, ah, toltra, ah, stoa, ngartiri. Magarabu, sebe, guk, address, segi, dil, area, help, tir, gud, 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 gula, tiang, tir, boldro, ah, igal. El khalal, to, mal, maklo, ludodol, gi re le, ndirga, oltra, ngi, team, ah, lae. Se, mal, klo, losel, mora, shovai, asugum, malubeng, individual. Magarabu, guk, sebe, la, address, tir, gi, dil. Pombalil, oltra, muka, help, tir. Gud, 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 gusamal, maklo, ludodol. Gud, segi, gada, kansen, ah, eh, chairman, Komsom. Gud, mal, mo, malasmal, help, ra, uil, ah, ah, maral, metmo, mati, already, tama, teal, importai, oltra. Ma, gari, guk, star, tir, magada, help, tir. Segi, gula, gula.
Kamsulae, delegat ra, son sorol, gabo, delegat abliyo, yu, mli.
Sulane, speaker, naga, malim, mo, kantsul, naga, illegi, la, for medical purposes, omni. Eh, te kel, solin, lo, agol, solin, mogakal, oloko, ah, if they allow, du, uspe, ai ganglen. La, alwi, speaker, ai gang, reduce, nicotine. Atetelel, gud, uspe, gud, uspe, ah, li, mal, oitik, teal, dohul. Eh, dik, mal support, teal bi. Omelung, speaker, eh, e gi, di, mlamudung, ah, gi, khal, ah, wa, atetelel, ah, wa se, gud, stro, patigal, ah, body, advertisement, airport. Ma, wul, ya, gi, gud, ngara, stoa, e gi, gud, magarabu, eh, gud, maklit, teal. Magarabu, se, mal support, teal bi, eh, gud, gud, so, wa se, sel effective, day, te ngi, te gi, blul, magan. Bo, ngi, ta, m, se edel, mukod, ngara, gari gi, sel, eh, teal, sel, bo, lo, dohul, eh, sel, fully, fully effective, in totalin, diakal, belau. Sulang, speaker.
Sulang, gabo, delegat, mli.
Sulara, teal, speaker, e, wututau, mergau, ma, beklad. Ak, kurenza discussions, and, eh, mindful, ra, gi re. Statement, ra, delegat, ra, tama, kuld, delegat, ra. Angremlu yu, ra, tigi, ngela. Education, ma, public awareness. Is a deterrent, logi walla, mora, rogul, dohul. Tere, mal, klagal, ra, gi re. Blaldo, ah, tama, kuld, delegat, ra, son sorol, ma, ablilo. Ra, gi re, guk, hardships, el bol, face, ra, adh, shovai. Eh, lol, tagar, sizable inventory, ra. Li loit, audod, lamal, mira, tanartir. And not given in opportunity, recover, ah, gi re, cost, tir. Tabro, la, gal, khal, wul, riga, gal, motra. Di, buk, talil, wa se, ak, ak, tiral, tabngi, teal, fine. Ma penalty for the purchase, ma possession, ma consumption. Wa se, any person who violates this section shall be imprisoned. Asum, goba, electronic cigarette, al der, al mulur, el alsel. Eh, otur, ra, bevir, ra, tohul, blur, ra, blul. But, mlar, ngi, aklo, claim, ra, we, ra, bo, la, teal, la. Di, di, mla, hitim, lemde, ramla, eh, ortem, lo, bam. And di, te, ah, gi, dil, electronic cigarette, egamogol, bus. Komogol, bus, not less than twenty four hours. El mol, but, ra, nine months and twenty nine days. For, I emold vape. Electronic cigarette in your possession. Kal el, gi, re, dohul, atel, gi, bl. Reveal, segi, bl, salop, ting. Like I said, motur, ra, bevir, ra, blue. Is an optional, morar, adh, l. Okia, gara, stoa, ah, umbali. Akora, di, mulbedev, wa se, ah, ah, vibrant, el blue. El promote, ah, shovai, ma, bek, beninga, dohul. Kal el, gi re, provide options. Especially, morar adults. Eh, lol, tagad, l, em, clear. Make decisions for themselves. Again, ak timo, reiterate, sel, mladung, ra, delegat, ra, angremlu yu. Ah, gi re, mania, public awareness, ma, public education. Ra legislation, ah, gi re, la, al dol, top, dul. Olvai, mal, ube, gud, marov, ra, adh, blu. Reduce, ah, option, sir tir. And di, ak, mal, di, il mut, el mo, mel, cleese. Al, patigal, I emold vape, el, no, di, alse, bem, loitim, bude, ramlim. Eh, wum, gul, bus. Let, ti, will, boil, eleven months. E, gal, el, di regal, dohul, atel, gi, blopting. Kom, sulara, teal.
Sulang, eh, olara, dirgopen, gabo, floridir.
Speaker.
Sir, speakers. A session, amol, mal, m, floridir, el, amal, eleven fifteen. Eh, kamutu, restate, moxion, eda, continue, session.
Oi speaker, moxion, ah, wut, restate, ngi, gi re, sel amendment, sel amendment, re, offering, ah, tama, Komsom, ulmose, gi, dil. Eh, housepin number eleven thousand sixty seven thousand seven S. Es, amlaria, diskas, ah, discussion, ngi, ra, gura, pora. Ah, speakers, speaker, m, ak, segi, dak.
Sekita, restate, mental, moxion, mna sekedet. Asugum ndia, ah, ah, amen, se, te kel go ngai, m, teal Flor, amendment, ra, offer, by, the chairman, ra, Komsom, du oi. Onto, teang, la, ma, floridir.
Oi speaker, ah, gula, adhul, mol, ma, aur, edel, moma, lasinkyo, sel, aduldruiding, tegi, dil, bi, speaker, edu, gud, gabe, ngai, wa se, se, ra. During, du, recess, gud, m, gud, gula, gud, gula, amle, gula, kagros, sel, desir, adh, gi, teal, bi, l, mut, ma wul. Mung, understanding, ngi, di, wa se, gud, ngi, ra, sel amendment, lo, bongi, teal, dhotin reading. Em, re, gue, Komsom, ah, chairman, ra, T G A. Amol, mal, mal, lo, rul, address, ai gi, dil, concern, sar, adhul, ngi, la, sel vital, lai. On segi, di, speaker, eh, se, ki, o, gi re, la, dhotin reading.
Gabo, clerk, gud, ngara, amit, moxion. Asugum. Asugum, ndia, al, for, delgamente, clerk, amur olkod.
Delegate Arura.
Oi.
Delegate Gibbons Junior.
Oi.
Delegate Culibert. Floridir Ganai. Floor leader Ganai. Delegate Komsong. Delegate Marino.
Oui.
Speaker Ngiraywet. Delegate Nyatka Kanai. Delegate Ongidoble.
Oui.
Delegate Otob.
Oui.
Delegate Traalulko. Delegate Sinzak. Delegate Solably.
Oui.
Delegate Talley.
Oui.
Delegate Umetaro. Delegate Umetaro. Speaker Anastasio.
Oui.
Mister Speaker, I am sorry. House number eleven sixty-seven seven S eighty-two. Adortin Elia Sediakanu.
Say, I will say. The bill, I am sorry, I will say. Adortin Elia Sediakanu. Floor leader.
Yes, speaking. I am sorry, house number eleven seventy-one seven eighty-one.
Say, the motion, in the second. I will say.
House number eleven seventy-one seven eighty-one. The old question, I am sorry. National Security Coordinator. I promote national security. I don't know. I am sorry. The little girl introduced, I will say, Anastasio by request.
Say, I will say. I will say, I will say. As soon as I say, "I will say."
Delegate Arura.
Oui.
Delegate Kibonst Junior.
Oui.
Delegate Kulliver. Floor leader Ganai.
Oui.
Delegate Komsong.
Oui.
Delegate Marino.
Oui.
Speaker Ngiraywet.
Oui.
Delegate Nyatka Kanai. Delegate Ongidoble.
Oui.
Delegate Otob.
Oui.
Delegate Traalulko.
Oui.
Delegate Sinzak. Delegate Solably.
Oui.
Delegate Talley.
Oui.
Delegate Umetaro.
Oui.
Speaker Anastasio.
Oui.
Mister Speaker, I am sorry. House number eleven seventy-one seven eighty-one. Adortin Elia Sediakanu.
Say, I will say. The bill, I am sorry. Floor leader.
Yes, speaking. I am sorry, the president, house number eleven seventy-seven eight.
Say, the motion, in the second. I will say, I will say.
House number eleven seventy-seven eight. The old question, I am sorry. PPL eleven twenty-five, I provide transfer equipment. Although, I don't know. Land registration officers, land registration employees. I am sorry. Land survey, I don't know. I am sorry. The little girl introduced, I will say, Delegate Komsong.
Say, I will say. I will say, I will say. I will say, I will say. I will say, I will say.
So, speaking, I am sorry. I support the old question. I am sorry, speaking. I am sorry. 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 So, speaking, I am sorry. I support the old question. So, speaking.
I am sorry. Speaking, I will say. I will say, 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 I will say. I don't know. Equipment. I will say, I will say. I don't know. 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 I am sorry. I will say, I will say. 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 I hope after. I don't know. I will make sure, I don't know. I don't know. I will say, I will say.
Okay, I will say. As soon as I say, "I will say."
Delegate Arura.
Oui.
Delegate Kibonst Junior.
Oui.
Delegate Marino. Floor leader Ganai.
Oui.
Delegate Komsong.
Oui.
Delegate Marino.
Oui.
Vice Speaker Ngiraywet. Delegate Nyatka Kanai. Delegate Ongidoble.
Oui.
Delegate Otob.
Oui.
Delegate Traalulko.
Oui.
Delegate Sinzak. Delegate Solably.
Oui.
Delegate Talley.
Oui.
Delegate Umetaro.
Oui.
Speaker Anastasio.
Oui.
Mister Speaker, I am sorry. House number eleven seventy-seven eight. Adortin Elia Sediakanu.
The little girl, I will say. Adortin Elia Sediakanu. Floor leader.
I am sorry. I am sorry. I will say, I will say. I am sorry. I am sorry. I will say, I will say.
Say, the motion, I will say. I will say, I will say. In the second, I will say. I am sorry. I am sorry.
Oh, speaking. I will say, I will say. I will say, I will say.
Say, the motion. I will say, I will say. I will say, I will say. I will say, I will say. In the second, I will say. I will say.
House joint resolution number eleven thirty-eight eight. The house joint resolution, I encourage the president. I request the lead partner. I will say, Taiwan, South Korea. I support the expansion of Palau International Airport. The little girl introduced, I will say, Anastasio.
Say, I will say. I am sorry. I am sorry. I don't know. I will say, I will say. Three hundred plus million dollars. I will spend it. I will say, I will say. I will say, I will say. I am sorry. The president, I will say. I will say, I will say. I will introduce the resolution. I will say, I will say. 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 What is the responsibility of the president?
Speaking, I am sorry. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I agree. I will say, tourism. I will say, I will say. I don't know. 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 I will say, I will say. I will say, I will say. I don't know. 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 I will say, I will say. I don't know. So, speaking.
So, speaking. What is the responsibility of the president?
I am sorry, speaking. I am sorry. I will say, I will say. 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 So, speaking.
So, I will say. What is the responsibility?
So, speaking. I will say, I will say. The resolution, I will introduce. It is, I am sorry. The president, I am sorry. I am sorry. I will say, I will say. I will say, Skymark Airlines. I will say, I will say. I don't know. 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 So, speaking.
So, speaking. The responsibility of the chairman, tourism. I will say, I will say. I am sorry. I don't know. I would like to open for discussion. As soon as I say, "I will say." I will adopt the resolution today.
Oui.
I am sorry. I am sorry. I will say, the president. Floor leader.
I am sorry. I am sorry. Miscommunication. One twenty-seven. The president. The little girl. Released government employees. The veterans. November eleven twenty twenty-two. I will say, I will say. One twenty-eight communication. Council of chiefs, I am sorry. I am sorry. Louis, Chairperson of Palau Election Commission. I am sorry. I will say, sixteen.
I will say, I will say. 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 The president of Taiwan, I will say. I will expect. I will say, I will say. 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 Mr. President, I will say. The delegates, the senators. I am sorry. I will say, I will say. 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 As the president of Taiwan. I will say, I will say. I will say, I will say. The responsibility of the president. The responsibility of the president. I P I L. Tovay. Oui. I will say, I will say. 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 What is the responsibility of the president?
I am sorry, speaking. Speaking, I am sorry. The responsibility of the president. Chairman, Umetaro, I will say. I will say. I will say. I will say. I am sorry. I will say, I will say. I will say, P I P G. Pacific Island Parliamentary Group. I will say, P I P G. 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 Speaking, I will say. I P I L. I will say, I will say. 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 Micronesia. I will say, P I P G. I will say, P I P G. I am sorry. I will say, P I P G. I will say, I P I L. I know. I will say, I will say. I will say, I will say. I will say, I will say. I am sorry. I will say, P I P G. I will say, I will say. I will say, I will say. I will say, P I P G. I will say, I will say. 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 I will say, P I P G. I P I L. It was two thousand nineteen. P I P G. Former Senator Hawaii, Senator Kalani. I will intervene. I will say, I P I L. Amle intervene, ulu ai se la se, apia, ah, E P I L ra nor, ah, ma taral exist. Na more than twenty years sel ngarii, mla mor ngi, ah, impact ra urerir. Mung, mle intervene, la se, girila, south, el kukomesa ra, effort ra nor, mka da ka, kora, eh, joint, eh, osigarolela coordination ra nor, ma south, mesel, losa de ngi, sa, P I P G la se, Pacific economy, or blue economy. Adiakalde il gara south. Le tial, arangela Pacific, angaria south ma nor. Mung giril expand ni mora nor, mo, mo ruwa la Pacific, sel dosa de ngi, sel Pacific, blue economy, entiakal, arangela Pacific, el tial di south, ma tial di nor. Mung se banlo ngi, le speaker, mung, ah, belau a di, mla ngiya intentra, tagiti, mle approach belau, lomito se alse beli el hoster se nextel P I P G meeting. Abelau akaltmokpimmo, blal ngi, di mlo ngi, ontila ta tongamel, la se me beregi, mo stregi, ma nexte kuk leho. Ma belau ablero ngai, supportra tongam, atongam, tongam, mo next, ah, presi, presiding officer, eh, nextel menu ra P I P G meeting. Degagabul utrokose mo yarang. Eh, return number, speaker, akme return number kwam, eh, meet up, lobangela, traklu metaro. Ma, ma staffer gidra, ah, indira, magi mlo ra, bulavei, kuk mo se gidile, E P I L meeting, for one week, il gimla ngi. Mung, di kul mo se gidde speaker, bet payil ra ulala mora, traklul, ah, Umetaro, mung kukplu, maski da goraa Snapchat ra ika il kukle one week, el meeting ramabra, gimara, ah, ah, bulavei. Ak ti soal hai da ter tiam, ngaria two resolution el giblem, eh, giblem pasa ngi. Ah, one ablayli introducing ya, ah, president ra E P I L, el kuk, ah, olol takantela, ma, you know, sympathy ra ah, E P I L members, el girila, gal mle, senator gidil, la kitayal, tregel bleda. Ah, mung mldiler ngi, ndio mengeru, ah, gidi kuk, belau, ah, hople introduce, ra atara resolutional highlight, ren gil mle, di imol, bigger belau, member, Major League Baseballer American. Ah, so, ah, ika rugul bulu rap, E P I L, mal ne supporter ngi, etama no, ngi la se, gaya tara mal ngi ngelila, pasiviel kuknamo showcase ra, talent ngi, bet payil ra ulal mo, mora, traklumetaro, mukplu maski ika gid koran, sure, Snapchat ra, E P I L meeting. Sulara tial, sulara eh.
Delegate ta tovei kaboe ebli.
Sora tial eh, Chairman Marino, sulara tial eh, speaker. Ekka lastel session, akora, adimle briefly, aku ai sa ika il goraa highlights, ma resolution, ma activity, so tia gidal talsantel meeting ra bulavei, eh, ndiak pogumelekla ika i. Ak ti, brenga sulenra tial eh, speaker. Tia, akati kegal, marti agidil E P I L delegation, at any time, take ital time ra, mlamemong. Ak mle staff both in the house, in the senate, eh, se begal lobangela ika agidil delegation, so olbi Rapalur la, R A P P U, ma E P I L. Ma be birra time, di soal share la se, ah, tial omoralegal lobangela Chairman Marino, mlo, em, lo, otol telek. El se begal dung ok ra ular, General Assembly ra, ah, E P I L. Among representatives, ah, member countries, el gumesertire, eh, Mister Speaker, ngariya be birriti. El serak staffer tial house, ma senet, eh, el hosta E P I L er belau. Eh, ak mle dra iber, akul oltagara wa Judith, Won Patrick Kwam, Senator Joe N Brown. Mung ika gidil mle hezra, Kwam delegational mora, eh, E P I L, Tina Munia, Vice Speaker Kwam, legislation. Mung mal, etmual ngurra tial, eh, diak pogumelekla ika il tilora lastel session. Ngariya draft ter tial very detailed report, ter tial o, omrolamel mora E P I L, el blal katmklia chairman. Ika idi mo mes alterung, ing saing, eh, mora attention ra beklad, metu mo mes ika il kuk. Very particular information, el girel tial meeting. Sulara tial eh, Chairman Marino, speaker.
Sulara eh, delegeta ebli gana, omso de la E P I L, tiregal brenga sulen la, ah, delegeta ta, atovei lulumter belau. Emo tiam meeting ra tagiti, tiam a dangara nor, emla ra nor, eh, ngalakramindana ul mo mora south. Mga omiti, eme, mle ngakidin mla mora E P I L, oh, emo kado brenga sulen, emsisi afri ngi, mla dangara nor, eh, mora south. Engakidu kuk ngartiang ngar session. Omam sulara eh, se, el altaim eh, soal Floridder, el, msa tele la, ah, delegeta ebli liu. Vel tangari akora soal mrgoy, gubesengari akwa dungokkut tial kade ali, esaduro siya, delegeta ebli liu. Delegeta ebli liu, ngari akora soal bo mrgoy.
Manso eh, speaker, tial tial, eme, ti, wa ditelibidu le toora abang, eh, obal toora belau. Speaker, it is with great honor and pleasure, as a delegate of Peleliu State, here in the National Congress. To welcome, the, one of the daughter of Peleliu, not only Peleliu, but of Palau. Ah, her name is Dedals Sofia Solang Hilt, and her husband, ah, Lindberg Hilt Junior. Speaker, the reason they are, they are here is, one of their son, who was an airman in the United States Armed Force. Ah, unfortunately, untimely passed away, and so they brought him here to Palau. As you know, our custom, and I'm very honored for the husband, to understand the Palawan custom. So they breathe proper burial, military style, in Peleliu. Speaker, this Dedals, she's a first sergeant, E eight, E eight in the United States Army, and still serving. And still there for, in twenty years, and still serving. The husband Lindberg Hilt Junior is also a retired military. So as you see, this family, not only from, ah, Tennessee, United States, but also in Palau, are born in military, father, mother, and daughter, and son. Speaker, with them is their children, ngariya Lindberg Hilt Three, Gerani Hilt, and Jepney Hilt. Speaker, ngali Keja, Saber, Olbad, Solang, ah, le airman, eh, like I said, most mayor, mtilulbe, the clear bela speaker. Eh, tiregal ngariya, au olle, Marvin Solang, man dem katetel, lolo, a house of delegate. With that speaker, it is again, with a great honor and pleasure, as a delegate of Peleliu, to, to present this very, very good couple, family man, religious man, and a military family to us in the House of Delegate. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
On behalf of the, the House of Delegate, eleven, olbi Rapalau, or, we call it Palau National Congress. I welcome you to, to the gallery, and for your service to the security of the world, especially the United States and the Republic of Palau. We recognize you, and we share with you the loss of your son. But at the same time, we encourage you, that you provided the, the security for this vision. And we hope that the Palawans around here will be able to enlist like you in the US military. Thank you very much.
Eh, delegate ta, yang, koba, malmo, malaking Floridderi do, ngi ra, a Floridderi, may staff, a step out. Kado deggo malmo ngara misil news?
Why sir speaker, kaba ra misil news?
Ah. You know, under the, the Palawan custom, we have, we have lunch, today, in a matter of about five, ten minutes. So we welcome you to join us downstairs, as we are about to end our session today. We welcome you, so that we can meet you, and, of course, you delegate. And we have light lunch before you go back. Floridder, then the ambrylin mo subject to call.
Ndiakal, wasal, misil news? Announcement. Malai speakere, wa se, bol, urisa ser tial urere den, di, umtura, ah, nextel godongi mra session.
Segida motion, nsa fectu call, emna seconded, tigel go ngai bolwa se il du oi, on tok, ala muwasi.